Recording now. This is the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, August 3rd, 2020. In conjunction with the emergency declaration, we're conducting it through Zoom. Please stand for those.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting besides us? All right, hearing, seeing no hands raised. The first item on the agenda is the many meeting minutes of July 27th, the regular meeting.
That's last week. I emailed a number of changes. I don't know if Jane had a chance to go through them. I don't know if any of the other members sent any.
I've got some changes too, so I'd like to defer it.
He's cranking right through.
What?
Cranking right through the.
At the same time, I have a Board of Health minutes and I have, which I just did today, and I have the Westcom minutes.
Board of Health Subcommittee.
Board of Health Subcommittee.
A report from the Subcommittee?
Other Selectmen reports?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
That's fine.
Do it on there for this. Do it on that.
Okay.
First, I am under whole business is the Action Ambulance contract you met with the.
Actually, that meeting today did not occur. We were loaded up on Zoom and one of the parties made a mistake and thought it was at three o'clock. And so we didn't have the action people present. We're going to redo it. Probably Wednesday. And we're going to go through the contract and make sure that responsibilities are assigned and clear. So that so don't have any more confusion.
So recap next week?
I'll recap it again next week. I do have something for you though, that it was reported to me today by the Chief of Police that Action's response time are averaging four minutes and 20 seconds.
That's great.
It's a tremendous improvement.
Yeah, great improvement.
And how many calls? Did you say how many calls it was?
Didn't tell me how many calls. But he said that they're, they are active. I can maybe by next week get a list of the calls, but they're moving around.
And relative to the primary contact, have we decided?
Well, that's, see, the board has never decided or voted to make the fire chief the primary contact person. In the contract, it's the fire chief. I told Action that we're going, I think we're gonna make it. Okay, the police chief. I told Action that we're going to switch to the fire chief, but up until their contract, the police chief was basically the person who oversaw the ambulance service. And so then it became, I think, clear that we haven't had a vote at the Board of Selectmen, so I think that's what I would recommend it.
Well, and we want to change to the fire chief because?
Well, I believe it was discussed in our meeting that that's what we were doing. You're saying we didn't actually vote to do it? We all agreed to do it at that, in that meeting.
I don't.
Did it require a formal vote? Or was it just, we were still modifying the contract that time?
I don't recall changing that position, to be very honest with you, but doesn't mean that if we found it on Zoom, I wouldn't acknowledge it. But I do think that the police chief is the emergency management person, and it seems to me that that, or if that's the title he has, I don't know if that's the title, official title, but that his, the domain falls more in his realm, A. It's just part of that job. It's, you know, it wouldn't be an extra duty or anything. It's just part of that job, A. And then B, I think that the fire department may have a conflict of interest since they want an ambulance, and this is another ambulance. Now, I would assume that they would be, you know, honest and objective and whatever, but it does give the perception that there's a conflict.
Well, I think if I recall, it was the police chief who brought it up and asked to have it changed over, so it wasn't. He obviously had a reason to it, knowing he was still the emergency manager, but wanting to, I won't say delegate, but he preferred to have the fire department in charge of it. So maybe he could explain his reasons to us, but.
An explanation for those reasons would be good, but regardless.
Go back to our minutes and then we'll find them at that time.
Action said that they will work with whoever is designated by the.
And I don't think it's a huge position, but I just think that, you know, you want to avoid appearances of conflict when you can. And you want to give it to the person that, whose job description it would be if he was the emergency management person, and he would be in charge of fire and police.
So you're hoping to have a conflict. Now, Jeff is on vacation, not until next week, right?
Right. I talked with him today. I think there's a negotiation that's going to be required if you're going to decide on the police chief.
Even if he, even if he has it under his emergency management part of his contract? Isn't he, that doesn't have that title in that position?
I'd have to take a look at what it says. I'm not sure. I, I think what Action has said is that they normally work with the emergency management director.
Right.
And that's why, one of the other reasons why no questions were raised during the contract process. But again, they said, you decide, we'll work with the contact person that you determine.
Well, report that.
So Wednesday, can you just get all the reasons squared away and we'll decide next week on that one?
Okay.
The Oversight Committee, Ambulance Oversight Committee, and part of the contract is there's an ambulance oversight committee to be four times a year.
It would have to be something appointed by the board.
Let's figure out who's in charge first and then work on the committee participants, because it may, that may reflect on if the chief in charge, the other chief in charge, and that might skew the membership, if you will, because you want to make sure the other department is participating, so.
And we have a couple of citizens that are interested, that are participating as well. We want to take that into consideration once we get the roles squared away.
Right.
Okay, so that's off the next Monday.
And also maybe some time spent, that Bob could tell us what the what are the skills that we're looking for in a, in a supervisory position of that nature? You know, like, do we want them to have some experience in that field? Do we want them, what do we want them to have, so that we're not just making a, you know, well, I like that person better than this person, or whatever.
Well, I think the Oversight Committee is.
To see that the contract is implemented?
Well, to see if the contract's implemented, to see, you know, to periodically examine the response times.
And review the numbers.
Review the numbers and see if it's financially, you know, accurate. And also to, if there's any citizens' complaints, like, you know, I called up and no one showed up, or the.
Almost like what they have in Springfield, the Police Review Board, or something like that even. Remember the advisory, probably because the financial part or the, it's something like that.
But if, and are we going to interview these people, or are they just going, we're just going to have their names and then make a decision?
I think first off, we make up the makeup and it made, the problem may just, it may be no problem. Okay, we get five people in our city, and those are the five people we would choose anyhow.
Is it a five person board?
No, I'm saying it might just come out.
As many as we want, and it.
So next week, let's have a opportunity to review.
But at least if we have these preliminary responsibilities that you say, when, if we did talk to them, we would be comfortable doing these things, and it would be a point of discussion, you know, I mean, so we don't.
Well, most of the things in the contract, say, if I recall, if they refer to the police chief, they say the police chief, the Action Ambulance will report to the police chief. Any. There we, or they'll turn, or they'll, there's a list of, I think about 10 items that, once a month, I have to give a report to the chief, which says the number of calls, the response time at each calls, the ALS calls, BLS calls, whether they build Medicare, Medicaid. You know.
Probably pretty similar to what they do in a department, you know, just like an Eastland other department would report, kick a monthly report back, or Warham, et cetera.
Right.
You know, no different. Except they don't have to make money. That's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Wednesday, you'll wrap all that up, hopefully.
Yes. I'll try and get, I'll try to get the meeting together again. I did respond to Action and told them that, okay, we had a mix-up, but we can do it again. I did have the police and fire chiefs on the, at the meeting today. And we did discuss it for a while, but we need Action involved.
Report on the fire department ambulance cost, you just cost operate?
I I got this out to the fire chief, didn't give him much time. He told me that you had, he put it after you, and that's, that's how we got this disinformation.
And that's what I thought.
It is, yeah.
I, I, I just got this in the mail today, and I made a copy for you and a copy for John. I don't really understand it.
So, well, there was no return address, it's just.
North Road. I think it was 115 North Road? That's on my, too? I don't have, I don't have the ambulance home, but I thought it was 115. I did think it was, it's definitely North Road, and I thought it was 115.
I should think it was 115.
So what is it?
Fatsey? No, there was no, because Fatsey is 100.
I maybe.
And there's no way on the other side, this is woods.
But, at any rate, that's, I thought that was in response to this same request, but I don't seem to be able to understand it, so.
Unsigned stuff is kind of.
Right. There is not a 115. Is there a 15? There's a, well, no. No. Well, it starts with 20. Okay, I'll have to go.
Well, actually, is 15 the fire station?
Oh, fire station. I can look at, I can look at, I can look at.
No, that is right here. Well, yeah. I'll throw it out here. Anybody on the Zoom call, send this stuff to Mary Ellen? No. Just a couple. Thanks for the paper.
What are we looking at now?
So these are the bills.
It's, it's in the, all these documents showing the expenditures, there's about a half a dozen pages.
That's a pretty good price on the transmission. Do you have Mary Ellen? 1500.
So why are we requesting this to begin with?
Because someone, two inquiries I got, they said, how much was the total cost of the ambulance? And I said, I don't really know. You know, I don't know. They said, well, how much was the transmission? I said, I don't really know. So I asked if we could find out.
Okay, so the transmission cost was $1,561.50. The purchase of the ambulance was $2,000.
Lettering.
The lettering was $250. And that's the vehicle for it. What's this? Oh. That's the 250, that's it.
And you got $1,000 for general repairs, $1,073.
$1,073.
Yeah.
And did they have to equip it with stuff? I mean, did they have to buy medicines or?
Well, that came with a $15,000 stretcher and some other equipment. Yeah. Radios they had.
Says remove and replace the transmission assembly.
Yeah.
Except the universal joints. Yeah, I'm sorry, 1500.
Knowing, having done some transmission, that's a pretty good price.
So what's the total?
So it looks like, I hear Don saying it came out of the fire department revolving, which is their, you know, where they take their inspection money in, so it's not appropriate.
Well, they got inspection fees and then the other ones revolving.
Yeah.
So how much is the total?
I have 4634, but I'm not sure. I looked down, everything you were going to say. I have 2,000 for the ambulance, 151 for the transmission, 250, oh, I didn't do print for the 250.
250.
250 for the lettering, 4884, 1,073 for the general repairs. For one, three, four, I know.
Total?
4884.
4884.
Somebody can check me out. I will check it again later.
Right. Anything else on that?
No, I just didn't want to.
That's the training.
Okay.
That's what I said, general repairs.
So is this separate from those? We're not kind of, we're not kind of, I don't see a general repair.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
So we're deducting this.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I think is part of this.
That's part of that.
Yeah.
Deduct to 1,073, but it's part of the transmission.
So you had 2,000, 1,500, so you're at about.
3811.
3811.
Yeah, just under four, you know.
And that was out of inspection fees or their gift account or whatever.
And then when he gets inspected, I assume, you'd like your pass inspection and everything's a honky-dory, or they say you have to do this, this, and this, whatever those this, this, and this are, right? Okay, and that that's, that's a delayed time because of the COVID, and they're behind, I think, is what I heard, but I'm not sure that's true.
Well.
I did go to the, I did go to the fire department last week to have a tour of the department, because I thought it was good for me to have seen it in person and see the condition of the building, and they were very gracious and did a very fine job. Megan and
Okay, there's, there's a couple of things on chat there. So which person is full-time? That's the police chief. Why doesn't the police chief, fire chief, and Board of Selectmen meet and decide, well, that's what Bob's going to do, and what else will be trying to do, trying to get that meeting together? Very difficult to hear Mary Ellen. Well, you're not sitting right next to her, which you're yelling in your ear.
Turn this, let's turn this a little bit maybe.
You can't see my tongue, but.
Okay, sounds, okay. What was the cost of the supply ambulance and medical supplies, banning action cylinders, portable suction, et cetera? I don't know the answer to that. We can find that out, but I do know that as part of the contract, if our, if our ambulance or if our flying car uses any of that, Action Ambulance is responsible for replacing it at no, at no cost of the town.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the other question I have is, do we, do they have immunity for the EMT, or do we have immunity for the EMTs, or partial immunity for the EMTs?
I think that's, that's going to be affected by this whole new, Don, right, the new legislation. I mean, it affects everything. It goes back to even coaches, which used to be covered by this type of thing, so there's a, that's a huge ripple effect. I think we had the conversation with Jeff in the staff meeting about that.
Right.
It's really going to affect a lot of volunteers, how they participate in town.
But the police already have partial immunity, right?
Yes.
So the police already have it.
Yes.
So it's a question of if broadening it, as I understand it.
Taking it away.
Taking it away. It's already been there. So you're going to get all these volunteers saying, whoa, I'm volunteering my time, and I can be held liable on my.
So presently, do, so presently, are the police the only ones that have it, or do the other, the volunteers and everybody else have it also?
Presently, most volunteers have it. For instance, coaches are covered under the town's umbrella policy for their actions as a sports coach.
Okay.
Always been that way.
Okay.
So, and it's really.
And the fire department or the EMTs, are they, they have, whatever.
They're covering.
And they, and they have also, that there's an immunity, like me as a pharmacist, I have immunity if you're acting in good faith, you know.
And you have legislative immunity for what you say at an official meeting. So does Congress and the state legislature. In other words, you can't be sued for libel.
That's good to know. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, and so, this is being invested, this legislature is going to come up with a new interpretation of the law someday.
Yes.
Which is maybe by December.
This is pretty hot, I don't know if you've been reading.
I've been reading some of it, but I have enough, enough to alert me to the fact that why do we have it?
The governor hasn't signed anything.
No.
Okay.
House and Senate versions are different. See what comes out of conference.
Okay.
And obviously, it's very controversial, and there's a big pushback from police. There was a gathering in front of the State House. I don't know if you saw the picture. Large picture of the globe that showed Chiefs' hard work standing in front and a whole sea of blue behind them. I guess they were there in the lobby of the legislature.
Okay. Good, good that they're speaking out peacefully.
Next item on the agenda is review of design for the Fire Department addition. The report that we received, quite extensive.
Quite extensive. I did drop a copy off at the Fire Department last week. Hopefully, maybe, maybe you could drop, I know we have extra copies, maybe they could get a couple of those as well. There are some numbers in there, Don, that are pretty alarming.
I think that's my question to you before I can post anything. If you have, you have a decision tonight as to which of the options to choose.
Well, that's no.
Your pocket, Don, I'm not sure about mine.
I just bought a house, so.
Tomorrow, my central register day, but well, as soon as, as soon as the Board makes a decision on which of those options to recommend, then I can post.
So I think for the people who are, are listening and watching, the report is quite extensive. It outlines a number of deficiencies in the current building, both some structurally and some of them dealing with OSHA ventilation, carcinogens. The, the ability for the, for the fire fighters to get their equipment without tripping over it while they're going, getting it ready. And the cost estimates run anywhere from 1.95 million. Option one to 13 million, and the final option, which would be rebuilding a whole new station and modernizing it. The 1.95 million would.
Just a renovation.
Would, would just be a renovation to take care of the hazardous, hazardous assessment. It wouldn't take it has fix some of the structural problems. Currently, there's apparently some problem with the well, because they say the water is brown. I don't know, that's about.
It's not deep, it's not.
Not deep, it's, yeah, it's an old well. So that's what we have. They, the architect says that some of this could be done over a course of one to five years. So it's really something that we have to look at in terms of, I think the first thing, if we do anything, would have to be to address the safety issues.
Well, the ventilation, we talked about that before, but if there's going to be any expansion, we talked about getting a new tanker. A tanker, unless you get a custom build or an old used one, is not going to fit in the current building. You look at these prices here, I go back a few years, Rick and I went down and met with Richie Neal's office to talk for any possible grants for that type of thing. At that time, they were looking at multi-use buildings, and we were interested, we got a.
Police and fire.
Basically, yeah, public safety building, as you will, and they were really hot on that type of thing. Then the funding for that dried up. I really think that that's our option at this point. We have to look for a large grant. We have to get partnered up with the federal. And I'm going to say it out right here, because this is a public meeting. We have a legislature. We have a legislator, Richie Neal, who has been in office a long time. He's now head of Ways and Means. He should be bringing something back to this district. You know him, I know him, Bob, obviously, you know him as well. You know, we've always supported him. We should be reaching out to him and saying, okay.
Throw us the money.
Well, to be honest, it's, this is, you talk about politics, it is what it is. You know, we need something back in this area.
I think, I think just so, for clarity for the audience, there were six proposals. One of them was for no addition and no new building. It was just to fix the, the, the most egregious errors in the present building and the health hazard, as Don explained.
Making a suggestion, let's, why don't you see if you can scan this and put it on the website tomorrow, so people can flip through it and see what the.
Yeah, that's good, but I, I would also like to add that one of them has an addition, and four of them are for new buildings. So it would seem like the architects at least felt that the new building approach was one that was going to give us the best return on our investment and was the most, the easiest one for them to present, okay? But the other two, there's a 2.1 million and a 6.1 million. With no addition is a 2.1 and a 6.1 for, with an addition. Okay, and then all the others are new buildings. So just so you know. And then if you look online, Mr. Markle is going to put it online, so you can read it, if you can put this online.
Well.
Or we have copies here that they.
We'll give you an electronic copy. We did not get an electronic copy.
Question was asked, does the, does it also address the asbestos and lead paint issue? Yes, it does. It does. The mitigation of that, but that, that's something that would, it says, has a basement in the existing operating facility will cost between 150,000 and 195,000, depending on what year the abatement is performed. So they kind of gave a range. If you did it tomorrow, it would be 150,000. If we waited three years, you know, the cost of everything goes up, so.
And also, piece of this is the future of the department. Where is it going? You know, like you say, if we're going to get a new truck, then you have that, that eliminates some of the options that are presented. If you're not going to get a new truck, then whatever. The, I did find out that the repairs to the, the station was built in 1960, 61 timeframe. In 1980, it was, an addition was added, and then 2008, it was updated again. So it seems like every, you know, 20 years or so, it's been needed to have something done to it. This is a little longer than the 20 years.
There's one in between, but that last one you talked about is the one to the back.
Yeah, right, that's the one.
But there were two to the sides as well.
So there were three, oh, there were two to the sides, you're right, you're right. So that's, that's what, how the, the, there has been an effort to keep the building up.
Yep.
It just hasn't been, it's been a long time, and it's an old building, so that, that decision has to be made of where the fire department is headed, and then what's the best use of our dollars, our $10s to address that issue.
I'd say incredible numbers. I recall the buildings in, in Warham and Eastland Meadow, I didn't think approached 13 million for a new station. So, obviously, they have more land. I mean, they are constrained with the land we have.
And that would, wouldn't that increase the price if we have to move the building, because if they're not going to put it there? Where are they going to put it?
There are some options.
So we have other things to, you know, to think about.
Town Hall of Farnbergis and use this land for the fire station.
Discussion for another day.
All right, so we'll try to get that on the website so everybody can see it.
We'll get it up there tomorrow. It'll be on the homepage of the website.
Thank you, Bob.
Selectmen's Policy and Procedure Manual.
Hallelujah, I have the final document in front of you. You can keep it. It is yours. I never want to see it again. I did put in a pad in the front of it. It says, it says notes.
Submit for that. Submit for that, please, okay.
Says policy notes, so that if you see things throughout the year, we don't have to discuss this ever again until June. If you see things throughout the year that you think should be added, you can just add a note on that paper, or do it another way if you want to. But try to keep most of the pages clean, so that we don't have to reprint the whole document. The, the vehicle usage policy, which is part of our thing tonight. We have a policy in there on page 23, I think it is. Part of it, I think, was incorporated in yours, Bob, but, but part of it is not, so.
I'd like to make a suggestion that's removed from our manual.
The vehicle thing is removed?
Because this is the Policy and Procedure Manual for the Selectmen.
Okay.
I think it should be moved into the Employee Handbook Module, so it's more apparent to every employee, we have a vehicle using policy.
Okay, so just on the front page, just right, remove vehicle, and next time.
You know, make it more.
I'll just remove it for the next time.
So it applies to everybody, basically.
Right, right.
Yeah. And then, for those contracts that don't currently have one, this is how all employees.
So that's that. Okay, so if you see, even if you see, you know, going through, you look up one, one particular policy, and you see that there's a misspelling or whatever, just write it on your little pad. Because I don't want to go through and have to do this every night or every week, but I will do it all at the end. And then I did include a, a way for Pam to collect all the manuals and incorporate the changes. And it would be that she would put the new policy and the page after the, where the policy is, and it's in page 24A. And then she would put it on a chart in the back, so we would be able to check it through the chart, look it up, which, these are the new policies. I don't assume there will be many new policies, really, to be very honest with you, but whatever there will be, we will try to keep track of it. If that procedure doesn't work, we can always change the procedure.
And if you give me an electronic copy of this, I'll put it on the Selectmen's page of the website, because I know there will be people who want to read it. Already one has written in the.
Okay, good.
Question, so.
Okay, so get you an electronic.
Yes, the answer.
And I sent, I sent you that as a PDF, so it can't be changed, okay, Bob?
Okay.
So that people reading it will, will not inadvertently delete the whole page.
Is there a social? Is there a social media policy?
Yes, yep.
Yes.
Now, that's one, I hate to say.
Makes 33.
We already had that in the employee handbook. Is this a duplicate?
I didn't see it, I didn't look.
Because we have that sign, remember, everyone has a sign.
We probably should have one for ourselves too, though, you know?
Well, and again, what, one of the problems with, with this doing this is that you read so many of them together that you sometimes pass them through. But when you read it alone, you go, oh.
Right, you're, you're dangerous to be out of synchrony, you know?
Right, right, that's right, so you can, you can.
We just to review that, see? We can review that.
Yeah, we can review that, right, and, and get it back to me. And then if you think there should be other things in the back for reference, I thought this was a good document for new selectmen. You know, so that they had the open meeting law, they had the, the, all the different resources, the MNA address, all that kind of stuff that they could. Access in case somebody forgot to tell them or whatever, okay? So that's done.
Dispatch update?
Well, um, you would ask me to contact. The surrounding communities to see what experience they've had so far. With Westcom. I did contact town of Munson, I talked to the town administrator. And the town, the town manager in East Long Meadow. Did call me back today and I spoke with her. I've not been in touch with the Long Meadow town manager, she's on vacation. The two others report very positively. Mary McNally said she's very pleased and Evan Bizard. The same with the service that they're getting. We have scheduled another. Meeting tomorrow. With Wilbraham. Again, this is at the staff level. Selectmen are invited if they wish to. Join the meeting as, as observers. The. I didn't get the, I didn't get the, the Zoom code yet. From Nick, but I'll get it tomorrow morning and this meeting is set for 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. To continue the regionalization discussions that we started last week.
And I would say, and I think Mariel, I hope you would agree, that our role last time was as observers as well. We had, um, Mr. Gentile presented, Bob, Nick Rowe and Bob really had a high level in. And we were there to. I guess the word participate in the meeting, i.e. in that we were there.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But we didn't.
Another word instead of participated, and it would have been clearer.
They were able to share what they had learned with us, we were able to hear.
And there were so many people at the meeting that there were lots of different people that were, were giving information.
I guess, uh, if there's a question, though, I would encourage if they're hosting it, ask them if they want my recording because people seem to have. Concerns on that.
Also, I got a call today.
Sometimes, so there is, there is a concern of, about recording on when you do department meetings. Some people would, would, I mean, I know down in my old job, they were concerned, they didn't want department meetings, um, recorded. Because you couldn't have this open and frank discussion and it, and it couldn't be as a working meeting where you could develop things. On the other side of the 20, it does give the public access, so that'll be their call, it's their meeting, whatever they want to do.
As I said, don't dictate it, but.
Also, I, I did get a call today late from, uh, the state 911 office. And I'm going to call back in the morning and suggest that that individual. Come on to the meeting this afternoon. Or tomorrow afternoon with Wilbraham. To answer questions and clarify. Just, uh, what kind of support would be available to both towns? If, uh, we were to consolidate.
Well, I went to the. To the West Pass, West, uh, meeting today in Chickaby. And, um, it was very well attended, there were 21 people there. Um, of those, three were administrations, six were finance people, four were from Westcon, seven were police or fire and one was a tech person. They got into a discussion about, um, the purchase of. I'm going to say Salter, is that how I say it?
That's what it is now.
Is it now? I guess.
It needs to be a little seedier than.
Yes. Good access to the plant, though.
They did get, they, right, there you go, they did get, I did, uh, they did, in the process of buying that. They are going to lease it on a one-year basis for three years with the goal of figuring out how to finance it. Whether it would be a bond or it would be a mortgage, you know, or what they would do with that. They have, it, it needs significant renovations. The top floor needs to be renovated, the bottom floor needs to be, it's got renovations, renovation work that needs to be done. The. The board was a six-member board. Mary McNally is on it. As is Lynn Simmons from Long Meadow, who's the, um, town administrator or town manager.
Yeah, Evan Bizard.
And Evan Bizard is on it. And then, um, there were two Westcon people and there was, Lynn is the chairman. And, um, they, um, it, it went for an hour. Of the hour, 45 minutes was discussing finance. With about as much clarity as the, um, regional school community discusses finance, I thought. Because it was, you heard, you said, you asked this question and I answered that. I couldn't put together, but if somebody else with more expertise in finance was there, maybe they could have. The, um, the, one of the biggest problems that they have is getting, is getting money back from the. From the state, so they put in grants and they don't hear about the money from, coming from the states and it goes on and it goes on and it goes on. And at one point, um, Erin asked for, um. Why this, she hadn't heard on one of them and then the next grant that she asked for, she got cut. So, um, they thought that that was sort of a message of, you know, don't ask, we're going to do our thing in our own time. Whether that was the true message or not, I don't know, I wasn't involved. But, um, she said that they have four grants before them now, none of which they have awarded. And they don't assume that they will get anything until August. What else can I tell you? It'll take one year for renovation, one year to one and a half years for the renovation of the project. And, um. What else, anything else? That's about it, I think, it was, it was, it was an informative meeting, you know, although they had a different, all had a, I was the only new person there. Everybody else had been involved in this in the years past and, um, it was, um. They have a finance committee of Paul Pastor, Pastor Siff, which, who's the chair from Chickaby. And they have Steve, Steve Lerner down, I don't know how he says his name, and Mary McNally, that's the finance committee. And the officers were Lynn Simmons, John Bolio, Paul Pastor Siff. He's a treasurer in Chickaby. He's a treasurer in Chick, I think is what he said.
He used to be the health trust.
Okay, so that's, you know what I know, that's all I know, I read everything that they said, I listened, I wrote down everything I could that they said.
So I guess the question I get out of that is.
Where do we stand?
Are they worried about not getting money from the state?
Yeah.
That was a biggie to me, I thought that was a biggie, you know, I, I said to her, I talked to Erin afterwards and I said. You know, we're, she's going to be on the meeting tonight, I think, she said she was going to commit, tune in, but I don't see her name, but, um, she said that, um. They spend. A significant amount of their time doing these grants and trying to get money for people. And so, like, for example, for the new, for the new building, they're talking about using the first class, first. Part of the first quarter, training for dispatcher, dispatchers where they could ask, ask for a fee. They're looking for at a range to have a, an indoor-outdoor range for, um, firearms. And to have a regional police academy. From what I, from what I gathered, and again, you know, I'd have to document all this to be sure that I'm hearing it correctly, but. SCCC does not want that police academy there, it's so much. And, um, the, um, so they want them out, but the police aren't interested in moving. So that's the dilemma that they have with that. You know, I thought it was, um. The, the state. She, she, I think her inference was not that the state didn't come through with the money at all, her inference was that the timing was not what she would like. You know, they say they'll get through with it at this time and then you hear from it, you know, 60 days later or 90 days later. And that makes it very difficult to balance your budgets and know where your money is coming from and, you know, doing that whole kind of thing. Um, but I, I, my impression was she thought she eventually would get it. I said to her, well, that's one of the problems, when you go into work with the state, you never know what the state's going to do. And she said, well, it is dedicated money, you know, so, you know.
They'll get it, it's just what it comes.
We'll get it, but when will we get it?
Well, dedicated for competitive grants, so the question is, you know, they're, they're applying for the same competitive grant. They may have an inside track, but technically, it's a grant.
Well, she was only talking about the grants, I don't know what else she was, I don't know what else she was talking about. And, and I, and I, I did get the idea that this is open to go forward. I mean, I did get the idea, they're still looking for people to join, that was just my impression.
Well, I think that was what the person that gave us before, when they went in the new facility, they would have room for up 15 to 20, Don, was that the number?
Yeah, so they, they do want to, they do want to expand, the people in the room were new people, it was Islam Meadow, Long Meadow, Munson. Three new ones and, um, me, four new ones. Chickaby was there and they're not new, but, um.
Well, the people that were there are part of the, I would say, the gang of five, you will, of the current facility.
Yeah.
The gang of five, you might well say, Munson, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Chickaby, and I don't know who.
Well, there was the other one, there wasn't there another one that?
No, there's only four.
They never got someone to replace, uh, the tip spot, Wales or something?
No, Wales was.
I thought they were going, no, they were really going far afield, I thought, for that other one, it's an interest.
Wales, Wales was in with, um. Holland, Wales, Brimfield are all in, I think in the Rutland.
There was the sense from the people that I was, there was a sense of, for the people that I was surrounded by. That, um, this is going to happen anyways. You're either going to do it now or you're going to do it down the road and if you do it down the road, you're not going to get the money. That was, that's, I don't know that they're authorities, but they have been going to these meetings a lot longer than I have. So that's, that was their position, more or less. And so that's it, that's what I found out.
Go back to the Jack question, okay?
Is it what portion?
Jack, no.
Should I talk about Jack?
Okay, just for clarification, some people are wondering, what is the reason for him to go to a regional dispatch and what is the proposed goal of doing so? Purely cost savings or other?
Where are you reading?
Okay, so. The reason, the original reason this discussion came up is because the state is suggesting very heavily that the towns regionalize in order to save money. In Hampton's case, we're the second lowest. 911 calls in the state at about 609. And our potential savings would be, we, currently now, we spend about $400,000 a year. And we should, would have significant savings, uh, over the course of a number of years to do that, and that's the reason. And our costs obviously keep going up every year because your insurance costs go up, your pension costs go up, your people get raises and that type of thing. If these other towns are worried about grant funding, coupled with the talk nation about defunding police, will dispatch be part of that reduced state money down the road? Potentially costs us more money to be involved in such a program in years four, five, six, seven. The money is dedicated, there's a dedicated fund for the money, they'll, they'll get the money eventually. What it looks like seven years down the road, we don't know, but. Any regionalization that we do will be a savings. To the cost savings to the town. Defunding police have nothing to do with emergency dispatch.
I know part of the thing what they talked about, we'd be 11% of their budget. They have a present budget number, but I think it concerns what if their budget, oh, they need a new building and now we're 11% of a. Eight million dollar budget instead of the three million we're talking now.
Back in the, back when we started this, I asked Erin about that, and the 11, the 11% does not relate to what your, your cost is.
Not our budget, I mean, it was 11% of their budget.
No, their 11, none of those, none of those, that 11% that we, they assigned to us does not relate to the budget. Our, ours cost would be because of the volume of our calls would be $100,000 because we don't even reach the minimum, that would be the cap, so. Our cap would be $100,000.
But I could change, there's no guarantees down the road.
The other thing I want to clear up too, while people are listening, if they are, is that Westcom is not a private business. It's a government agency. It's the same as a town and it operates the same as a town, they have the same authority of the town, they can bond, they can, uh. You know, make contracts, they have to follow all the procedures, all the ethical, all the ethical, all the conflict divinity. They're a body, what's called a body politic, so the same as a small, small town.
So I guess the question would be, are they a for-profit or not a for-profit?
They're not a for-profit.
That's a big difference right there.
Uh, tomorrow, when I have the discussion with Wilbraham, it's not just going to be about fees and funding. We haven't talked about governance. So I think that would be an important. Item, uh, if in fact a decision were made to go with Wilbraham, just how, how are we going to manage this, uh, consolidated entity?
Well, it's no different, I mean. Then you're going to Westcom, I mean, you're, you're ceding some authority to the Westcon organization because they're in charge. But you have a body that you sit on, I think you'd have to look into some type of thing with that, I'm sure that, you mentioned the other regional thing that is Holland, Wales, they have some consortium.
Right, the original agreement, the original agreement with Westcom when we were first in the spring. Is that each, there, there's three boards, they have three boards, the board of directors, the finance committee and operations. The board of directors is made up of the town administrators or town managers of each town or a designated mayor, in Chickaby's case, that'd be the board director. The finance committee is made up of the treasurers of each town. And the operations are made up of the police and fire chief of each city and town. So that's the governing structure.
So people, everyone has a seat.
Everyone has a seat in the table, now, it's, you know, it's, if there's five towns and it's your one fifth, your one vote out of five. But at least it's, everyone's got an equal vote, everyone's equal.
Well, I will say that the, the discussion was very open, everybody in the audience participated as did, or had the opportunity to participate, as did the board. The board is the one that took the votes. But they were not on major issues or not controversial issues, I mean. So that's what we know.
Okay, thank you. Vehicle use policy?
Well, I, we have. A policy, certainly for the animal control officer. And I just put some other items together here.
Do you use, I brought you the one from Wilbraham, will you incorporate some of that into it?
I did.
Well, to be honest, I think we're kind of beating this to death.
I think we should just vote on this.
No, I said we're going to move it into employee handbook.
This is going to be in the, his will be in the employee handbook.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, one of the things that, uh, no community observes. That is in the law. Massachusetts law provides that you may not idle your vehicle for more than five minutes.
Five minutes, I saw that.
Yes. That is.
I was surprised at that, I don't know how that could ever be.
Not enforced, but, uh. This was, this was done particularly, I guess, because.
Although my husband said when I was discussing this policy. My husband said when I was discussing this policy, we don't let the spring do a task for more than five minutes, we tell them, turn it off. If I'm going around and they got their car going, I go turn the car off. And in the summer, it's really, they don't want to turn it off because they want the air conditioning, but, you know, it is, is some, some, depending on how frugal your budget is, I guess.
The other part, if you're looking at doing this, make sure we have the, the language in there for reimbursement. And I know it came up a couple of years back about whose number do you go by, Don, and I know you're probably familiar with this, whether it's the IRS number or it's the. You know, when people use their personal vehicle. There's a reimbursement rate, I want to make sure that's covered in the policy, that should be.
Okay, now, uh, do we want to use, uh, the standard IRS?
Make sure it's mentioned. If it comes up and like, what do I put in for? Take it off the agenda.
Okay, make a motion, accept it.
I make a motion to accept whatever policy the town administrator comes up with, for the employee handbook. Bob, you've got the experience in it, you can come up, you just bring it back to us.
Back, I need a new BMW.
You got it. Okay, so, do we want a motion, can we do one? And I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Lot of pressure on you, Bob.
What about ambulances and, uh, and, uh, emergency vehicles, they exempt, they must be exempt from the.
Exempt from, from the five minutes? Yeah, I think they are.
I mean, I, uh, well, there's a lot of exemptions. Actually, police officers don't need to wear a seatbelt.
No, they don't.
All right. Police cruiser report, five-year history.
This is what the police chief, uh, gave me, he said for a number of years, the department has operated with six vehicles. One car is purchased each year. Every three years, a second car is purchased in that year. We are, the town is moving away from the Ford interceptors, uh, to the Chevy Tahoe, uh, vehicle, I guess, lots of police officers around the state have been looking at what's the best deal. Apparently the Chevy Tahoe has a reputation for lasting longer, so, that's a big argument for switching from Ford.
I think, I think it also has to do with the topography, you know, I read a report that the interceptors are, I was like, more prevalent in the flat land, if you will, and the Tahos are more prevalent in the hill towns. Uh, but it used to be, we got that extra car every two years. And I think as Mary Ellen pointed out a couple of meetings ago, the warranties are getting better, the cars are getting better, and we've been able to push that extra car into a three-year cycle. Cliff, roughly, you would say, you know, into a special town meeting article, every, it was guaranteed every two years, and now it's every two or three years, it's getting better, as the cars are being treated better. Yeah, but unfortunately, you get into the point Chief has always said, do you wanna spend ten thousand on a transmission repair? Or get what you can for the car now and go ahead and get a new one, when the warranty's gone? And that's kind of the history of it, been so far.
And then does he replace the car that is in the most need of, um, repair? Or does he do the most?
It may not be the mileage, it may also be the condition.
The condition would be more important than the.
And also, and also the type of car, he may be saying, okay, I wanted to turn out with the last sedan and get another SUV.
Well, the one exception recently was when he cycled down one vehicle to the part of, which had low mileage.
Anything else on that?
No, I understand it perfectly.
The town accountant is here.
The town accountant is here.
If you sit over here, you can be on camera, Cliff.
Or if you sit over here, you can be off camera.
What news do you bring us?
Oh, you asked me to come in. I are here.
I am here.
I got stuff. I have questions. Just thinking about the cruiser, are you thinking of putting the cruiser on, town special town meeting?
We made a commitment to address it in the fall town meeting.
Maybe a source of funding for that. I can elaborate now if you want.
Right now.
Well, for years, uh, we have been, um, charging extra money for off-duty work, detail work, we get, they reimburse us for the FICA we have to pay, that goes into the general fund. There's also a fee to different vendors that are not municipalities, by the way, that has not been going into the general fund, but has been accumulating in police off-duty. There is ample funds in there to buy a new cruiser. If not, that could be saved for another day, or I can roll that into the general fund, which would enhance free cash next year. So it's an idea, it's a thought. I did check with Kathy Zanetti, uh, because I wanted to be sure that we did not have any vendors who we've billed who did not pay us for the work. And she said that's very rare. We do have some, but those have been written off already. So, uh, one, one of the reasons for holding those funds was exactly for that reason. But most of the work that we've done in the last number of years has been utility work. Those are the money in the bank. So anyways, um, that's where I've been accumulating the funds, I've not been requested to move them, I've not been requested to do anything with them, it's not, uh, it's not, uh, it doesn't impute to the police necessarily, because it's, was because of their work. It can be the, it can be used by the town for quote, any legal purpose.
So, we have a source, we could say a transfer from there, just like we could transfer overlay reserve, whichever, it could be, fire the motion.
Available fund.
I mean, roughly?
Sixty thousand.
Okay, so that would cover the whole fire.
It would cover a reasonable cruiser.
Lettering, radio work, the whole bit.
Transfer of all.
With enough left over for cushion in case.
Well, typically, they run the forties, you know, with the trade in.
I think the last one we bought was over fifty, but I think it was.
That's because we didn't do the trading, because of the fire line.
So, again, I'm not recommending one way or the other, I'm putting it on a table that there's money here available.
And are we gonna do a trade-in this time?
This would be a trade-in.
We're gonna, that's what I thought.
So you wouldn't need it all.
So, so your free cash situation, I heard, is pretty good?
Well, um, it's reasonable. We took a couple of pretty good hits on it. I think it, what, four sixty-five? Four sixty-seven, something like that? We took two really, really heavy hits against our free cash. One was, and if I put my glasses on, they're gonna fog up, so. One was in our uncollected real estate taxes. We were up a hundred and thirty thousand from last year. As uncollected real estate taxes, which is a dollar-for-dollar hit against our free cash number. Okay, we start with a, what we call the, um, undesignedated fund balance. We put in unused appropriations, add excess revenues, i.e., uh, local revenue, and then we deduct out any uncollected taxes. So I talked to the collector, and, um, she thinks, and I, I tend to agree, that there was a really poor job of explaining what the deferral was to June twenty-ninth. And we're finding that a lot of people thought the tax was being waived.
Awed instead of deferred?
Now, once the, we found.
Well, that's a big difference, yeah.
That was, that was an option, Don?
Well, you had known.
Yeah, um, and I'm, I'm sure there are some people that just didn't have the money, I'm not criticizing anybody.
Part of our concern was the deferral, that, you know. You're talking a hundred something, you're representing.
More than last year?
No, I'm just saying, you're representing between thirty and forty, maybe even fifty.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, yes, uh, now, I, it's not paid by June twenty-ninth, then she sent out the demands. Those people that got the demands are calling in to say, uh, why am I hitting his bill? You know, so, uh, not only, if you didn't pay by June twenty-ninth, the interest and fees retroactively back to May first, that's a large chunk of money at fourteen percent.
Oh, no kidding, plus they're looking at that one, plus they have the August one in their hand as well.
And talking with her, um, and, um, she let, the thought is, is that they'll probably see a large bump in collections for August first, with, uh, people that have to pay the back and the current and the Bs and all that stuff, so, we'll have to monitor that. Not much you can do about it, she's, she's a capable tax collector, and has always, as you, was reported by our accountant, she's, uh, our auditor, she keeps our uncollected balances.
So this would be similar to what you told us last week or so about the commitment thing. Because the commitment didn't come in prior to the closure,
That's my next.
It's gonna come after, so it's really gonna impress next year.
Yeah.
Plus this extra collection.
Yeah, that's on motor vehicle exchange.
Right, so.
The, so we took a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We took the a hundred twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and twenty-five dollar hit on that, okay?
But we're still gonna collect that, so.
Oh, sure, that's our money, that's, yeah, it's a receivable. It's definitely a receivable. It's an asset. Pardon me, so, the other thing that we got hit on was that, through a combination of the state being closed, our folks not being in, assessors and the like, trying to do the routine stuff, but we never got our commitments until, our motor vehicle exchange commitments until sometime toward the end of June, when we would normally have got them maybe a month earlier, and they would have been due in thirty days, we would collect some of that money. Okay, um, that was a, that was a large chunk of money. That was, where is it? That was about a hundred and, yeah, that was, I'm sorry, that was the hundred and twenty-nine, a hundred and forty was the real estate. Yeah, that, that was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
So, the upside is the two seventy you're talking about will actually show up potentially next year, sorry, the current year's free cash.
All things being equal, yeah.
Right, yeah. And I go back to your statement before, when you said, hey, by the way, that's the year you're really gonna need. So this is actually you're the prognosticator, and it worked out well for you.
So when we go and set the tax rate in two thousand twenty-two, we'll have the evidence of those collections to, A, uh, add to free cash, and I don't mean pat it, I mean, we just had no capability to collect money legally. Uh, and, uh, so that'll be money in the bank towards free cash for our budget for two thousand twenty-two. Because again, I'm, that's the year I'm thinking will be a rough year. So, um, there were some other minor hits, we got a hit because we paid more in COVID than we collected, but not a big amount, and that money's receivable as well.
You gotta get that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're holding out receivable, but they, you know, they deduct anything. They deduct any negatives in our balance, and the only other negative we had was, um, nine-one-one money is always advanced and then paid, advanced and paid, we had fifteen hundred dollars in peanuts, you know, so. Um, those are the hits to free cash, which follows out, have a regular year, we're in the sevens.
Right.
So we, we had a good year. You know, all things being equal, we had a good year.
And next year will.
Right, now, I'm personally, one of the reasons why we did recover, we got it was, is that because of the lack of activity, we didn't spend as much money, and we had some accounts that really turned back more money than I've seen them turn back in a long time.
I suppose the police, you know, we didn't have injured on duty, we didn't have coverage like we did today.
They turned back fifty thousand just in payroll alone. I noticed some accounts didn't get used, like they didn't do any work on the school, that was fifteen thousand that was returned.
You know, again, same thing, usually a project coming at the end of the year, and I think they're all just.
To overcome this year.
To overcome, but I think the, uh, you know, being able to use their cleaning things, Jeff mentioned that, uh, the school, you know, the cleaning devices came over here for free, and.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm, but, okay, one thing, one area helped with another area. So, um, I'm, I was pretty pleased, I kind of was figuring something in the high fours, from just my numbers, but, um, pretty pleased at what we ended up with for the year, so, um.
The people that, um, misunderstood the deferral, um, it was, did, did, did you read the announcement that they got, and was it really, uh, was it clear that they should have understood it, or?
To me, knowing what they were saying, yes. All right, knowing what the intent was, I read it very clearly. Whether somebody else read it in the same way, who might have misunderstood, or a neighbor tells them, well, you don't have to pay that, that's.
How much does that affect them? How much money, how much is, on an average, just a rough guess? That means that they have to pay an extra forty dollars, an extra hundred dollars, an extra five hundred dollars?
Let's say the tax bill is, uh, an average tax bill might be fifteen, fourteen hundred dollars a quarter, interest rates fourteen percent. And then you have, uh, you have a demand fee, late fee, it, it's, it's serious money. Our, our collections from the collector for overdue and late tax payments is over sixty thousand dollars a year.
In this year or every year?
About every year.
Every year.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's serious money, fourteen percent, it's almost, you know, when I look at it, it's fiscally, you know.
It's not more significant this year than any other year, so it's not because of COVID, or the fact that people were laid off, or any of those kinds of things, it's just,
You're right.
We have a group that pays late for whatever reason.
But the reporter, for a reminder, wants the exact number.
Oh, dear. Well, can you email me? Wait a minute, let me try here.
That's a free cash number.
Oh, the free cash number, I don't have.
Okay, so, at what point do we wanna, I mean, the assessors are gonna start their work, they've got the table, they've got the, the chart, and start getting into tax rate time?
I've been doing it.
I know you have, and now you have this other number.
Here's my question. Do you see anything on the fall town meeting that would be a raise inappropriate?
Not, you mean, not a transfer from free cash?
Or available fund.
Couple of things we kicked around was, A, the cruiser, you've helped us with that, the tree work, which we've been talking about, do restore some money to paving, which we also cut. And everything else was, I hate to say, minor.
The treasurer wants, treasurer wants to put some money to lower the bond.
On the debt, yeah, yeah, he wants to put some money on the debt. I know, I'm not, he always, always wants to put money back into stabilization, but I'm not sure.
Conservation fund.
Conservation, yeah, that's a thousand, yeah, it's very small.
That would raise inappropriate, huh?
It has been in the.
It has been, when it's an annual, but it could be a transfer.
Yeah, uh, we'd have to restore money to the, uh, reserve fund. Twenty-five thousand in there, we'd have to put twenty thousand back in there. So, uh, we could use the, we could use the free cash number all up with no difficulty at all.
So if you did that, what would the tax rate go up? Basically, is the question.
I always say the same thing, two and a half percent.
Well, that could be, because we barely, we really didn't jump the budget up much. If you said every money article we're talking about is set for free cash.
Yeah, I got, you know, a thousand people looking at my back, if you guys look at me here, and you want me to tell you the tax rate's gonna be.
That's what we're looking at, if you have a sense of that, come back.
I think we'll be comfortably well within.
What happens to the dump truck? Didn't we have to put money?
We borrowed the money.
Didn't we? I probably just referred it to the, to this meeting, no?
Well, we borrowed the money for the dump truck.
The radio.
And the radios.
We have paid for the dump truck. And we paid half of the radios, we haven't, I'm surprised we haven't gotten more bills on the radios, we've still got a chunk of money.
What about in the highway addition?
Highway additions was a reason appropriate, that's sitting in the account right now.
Right, that's what I thought, so that's already, you know.
There was the Sander.
That was, that was snow and ice.
Snow and ice.
Cook it out of snow and ice.
Yes.
This is the free cash.
That's the free cash.
Yeah, whoever asked about the free cash, the letter we got from the state, the general fund free cash was four thirty-five six seventy. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy.
So even in, now you talked about Dick was looking for something, I know that discussion happened, I think, at advisory, not so much in our meeting. That was a bit of a surprise when I saw that email. But that was a discussion Dick had with the advisory committee, to let them know that we're gonna want to pay something down on the debt.
Yeah, he's.
What type of number do you think he's looking at there? Take it in thirds?
I couldn't speak for him, I haven't talked to him about it, so I'd be hesitant to even give a number, because I haven't talked to him, I know he'd like to do something against it.
I agree.
So even if it's only fifty thousand, and that's not my number, I just a guess.
Well, we talked before about something like the radio, which is a huge capital purchase that's good for X number of years, so there's no reason to pay it off in the first year, because it's like a building.
I think he's planning on this, it's a five hundred thousand dollars over three years, I think he'd like to, on a, on a, uh, on a best of times, at least pay a third of it off.
That's what I'm looking at, if I'm looking at the numbers you're talking about here, with if we wanted to restore some tree money, maybe restore some paving money, take a third towards that debt, we'd still have a few bucks left over either plus reserve account, stabilization, or reduce the tax rate, without any impact. You know, especially since you found a way we can pay for the cruiser off the, not off the books, but off the free cash.
And even then, if you don't use it for the cruiser, you can use it for something else.
So I think there's some options here for this board to consider with the advisory.
Yeah, so I, again, I think two thousand twenty-one's gonna be okay, you know?
I can still go back to my concern of last meeting is, we have these financial articles for the fall town meeting. Are we gonna be able to hold a real fall town meeting? It's all about that second wave, and you're getting the information from the state, I'm sure they're sharing with you. And Don, you check the MMA all the time. Will there be a possibility of, again, some special legislation allowing towns to do things?
But it can't possibly, second wave be any worse than what we were doing in the end of May.
No, it isn't, but again, we, we, I don't wanna say we, we kept the town meeting articles light, so that we wouldn't have the potential for flooding into a bad distancing. And now we're down into where, well, we have this town meeting, we may have, we have to put some articles on there. And so, what I talked about before, do we move the town meeting up so if we wanted to have it outside, it wouldn't be in?
You know, technically, you can spend this free cash anytime right up through next year.
Right, well, we'd have to set the tax rate first.
We still have to set the tax rate
Right.
For December, and
Right.
That would be what the determining.
Where's the Green Meadow, uh?
Ooh, one ninety-eight.
Are we almost done with that? One more year?
Yeah, FY twenty-one was last year.
Right, so that's kind of like, okay, what are you thinking of going ahead and looking at somebody's numbers you're talking about?
Oh, I mean, it goes back to what he started with FY twenty-two, that's gonna be off the bat number as well, so.
There was a time that was real money.
Thank you, Senator Burksen.
Yeah, will you hear, will you there? I do have a couple of questions. I have not seen a bill from the ambulance folks. I've not paid them any money? I've not paid them any money.
We'll be on the phone with them.
They sent me a bill. Me, I don't know why. I sent it back, very nice note to the person that it came from and said, I don't approve payments, I process payments. Please refer this to the town administrator's office. Okay, that was at least three weeks ago. And it was for a third, or one twelfth of the.
Twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, so I was, I was just wondering where that was.
Hasn't come in yet, but certainly that'll be in the discussion.
Because they're, you know, now here we are, owing them another month. The other question I had was, where, where are we with the Westbrook costs for the CPA? I have.
I have not heard back. That was a question you and I had for Doug, basically that I felt that when it was presented. Went to the land trust or something was gonna cover all the legal fees. Doug, you know, was on vacation. I think he's back now, so.
But I have the, you know, I have the invoice and, you know, as, you know, Bob and I have talked to Rose about it and, you know, what I did promise her was is that if I get assurance from somebody that the town will be reimbursed, by the way, in writing, then I'll, I'll advance the money. I have no problem with that out of CPA. We've done that before. So.
I'll reach out to Doug, I'll reach out to Sherry and see what.
Yeah, okay. That was the only, the other thing.
It did seem to be a heck of a number, but I know that that dragged on for quite a bit, but that. No, I'm just saying, that was for a acquisition. I mean, that was Minutog mountain size number, really.
But I don't think that they have closed on the property yet. It's closed. Those are our legal bills to date. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
My pleasure. Once a year is fine. I'm always available, you know.
Anything under select ones reports? Thanks, bud.
Just quickly, so the liaisons haven't really met. I did make a point and I think I've emailed out to you, Bob. Please encourage at the staff meeting to make sure that the different departments and boards put on the calendar their meetings. I've seen a couple posted and they don't seem to be on the online calendar, that parking records meeting or whatever. Keep that up to date.
Do we have a list? Do we compile a list of all the, all the liaisons easily available? Well, you could just email it to us. There's no, absolutely no rush, but I, I do.
If you look on the town website.
Yeah.
I've started adding the liaison to the board affiliations. So if you look under, for instance.
Board affiliations, like under select.
No, I'm saying if you look in the planning board.
Yeah.
You'll see plan board members and then the person who's the board.
Oh, yeah, I think you have to go through each one, don't you? I just want a list to say, okay.
And that was in the minutes of our minutes, a couple.
But we did it in several sections. We didn't do it all in one meeting.
Yeah, and then I think they're in the ones we were gonna review next week. They're at the beginning of that one as well. I think there's even actually maybe even still a couple we've missed. Nobody's defense dealer. Why that is.
Let me do Board of Health Subcommittee. Okay, we met today because we're gonna meet the first Monday of every month. And the. I told them that I had written the two letters to the Public Health Nurse in Hampton, Wilberham Regional School District, which we did last month. That the town hall is open smoothly. Every, nobody comes down below, no, no town residents come down below. With the exception of the cemetery committee that says they need people to come down below to view a plot plan downstairs. I told them that when I bought my cemetery plots, they took me out to the cemetery and showed me where the plots were. I think that that's a system that we could use. Because if you're gonna make an exception for one group, you have to make an exception for other groups, whatever they present. So they will try to resolve that amongst themselves.
One customer though.
One customer, one customer, one person, one, one complaint.
Biggest problem the cemetery was having, you may recall this, is they were finding somebody already in the plot.
Exactly.
They had bigger problems than that.
Exactly. There are no new COVID cases.
Stick, pump, what?
No new COVID cases in Hampton. I gave, I gave the, I gave Jane and Lori a copy of the flyer that Islam was using to do pre-COVID testing. Bob had mentioned that to us several weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, and said, would we wanna do it in Hampton?
Do you still have to have, you have to get a doctor's thing? You just don't dry up and say, test me, right?
Yes, no, you would not need it. Anybody in the public can go and get it. But anybody in any town can come to your town to get it if they choose. It's free. They, the, the health people, the other health members on the committee, felt that they were, this was fine to do as long as it didn't involve them. They were not going out and screening the people. They were not gonna go out and give numbers. They were not gonna, whatever. But, so I think how we left it was that they would look into it further. I, she, I, that was one of the questions we didn't have, whether it was one, one day or a week or two weeks or whatever, yeah.
I have to say, we went to CVS two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Got a Thursday appointment and had the result back on a Friday.
They say. They said that they, they had so much business, they had two days in Agawam, because they're much larger community, but they had two days. They had to go to two more days because they had so many people that wanted to do this.
I can understand their point about they not wanting to be the people.
Absolutely. And Lori. No, so this is, what's the company that would comes in? Bob, do you remember? Travers or?
No, I don't. I have not had any time. But I, I, I did see a report. Said there were two kinds of tests.
Yeah.
There's the quick one, which is not considered as reliable.
As the longer one?
Yeah, the longer one, though, the problem is you may not get your results for ten to fourteen days.
Well, and the other part of it is you test now, ten minutes from now, you can have the thing. So, I mean, I don't know, but the, the cherry brand, which is the Minutog nurse, the nurse from Wilberham and our nurse and Lori are gonna meet on September fifteenth, just so that, as with the schools opening, that we have a good communication relative to what we're gonna do about all that. The nurse has been invited to join our meetings every month if she wants to. She doesn't have to, but if she wants to. She's being given a phone to do her maven calls. She's been given a fob to get in and out of the building. And she will be there. And then the only other major issue was the study, the water on Main Street. Whether we should have a study done of this water, whether we, whether we know what is really caused to the situation, whether we should study all of Main Street. And then we should come up with what caused it and what is the solution to it. Because there is a feeling that, you know, like Jane's house has poor water and this house over here has poor water, but it's not one of the five being tested. And I only get tested if I go forward, but my water may be bad anyways. So should there be, you know, a tie-in mod kind of study of all of Main Street to say, what are we gonna do? And then whatever we do, what's the cost gonna be of that project if we do it? The, there was, we had a discussion about reverse osmosis and there was some negativity about that because it's very expensive to do. Everybody said that. I mean, Lori and Jane both said it's very expensive to do reverse osmosis. So I don't know if you, if that's something, you know a lot more about this issue than I do, except that I do know that it's been going on for years. And I don't know that we have come up with a solution that is. I don't know if we know the extent of the problem. A, you may know it. I don't know it. And I don't know if we have the solution.
I talked to Connecticut Valley about this last week. They looked at the numbers that were presented to us and they're certainly very treatable. Talked to, and you're probably aware that the numbers on the south side, we don't have an issue with, right?
Yes, you, you said that, I think, last.
Did you ever try to look them over?
Pardon me?
Did you look them over?
I did, but I didn't know that I really understood. I mean, it seemed within range.
Yeah, I think.
I didn't think that they looked like.
Well, it, it's more that, I think to simplify it is that we have two public wells that are supplying
Right.
the homes in the cone, if you will. The well that we put in next to Academy Hall is supplying water that's well within probably better than the water at your house and my house. Certainly better than mine. I have a treatment system. The one that's behind the garage is not giving what we needed to give. So that's what we're talking about. Do we need a treatment system for that to supply those three homes?
But are we coming up with that solution ourselves or is a professional organization saying?
That's why Connecticut Valley is looking at it with.
Okay, so they do it together?
Right.
Okay, okay.
So then your question is, and then your next question is, well, how far does this go?
Right, exactly.
Well, in that, we surveyed around town and, you know, you probably could survey around town. We could probably ask half the people on the thing. How many people have a Brita or Culligan system or something in their home? This is country living. You have
that we would have had twenty years ago, that we can say, okay, all this water has been now polluted because it's the levels are so much higher than they used to be. We don't.
No, this is nothing like, to be honest, the, the dump thing. If we go back, we. You know. Yeah, this isn't the full one.
So do we think there is a need to look at all of Main Street or we don't think there's a need to do that?
No, first, you mentioned the Jane one, but we also had Dana's house tested and you know.
Which wasn't, was, was fine.
Which had pretty much glacier water.
So, so, so why is that? You know, shouldn't somebody be able to explain to us why that is?
Well, they did. If you met with Tom Kuchar and Joe Dilke, he'll tell you, it seems. Seams in the thing. It's like, for instance, you drill a well, your neighbor to one house down is getting thirty gallons a minute and you're getting ten. And you're like, why is that? It's because there are seams in the bedrock. And Don, you probably, you probably could ask everybody in Fernwood and they've got an oak mill, they've all got different.
So there's nothing that we can really do about this, right? Is that what we're saying? And that, and that people that have an issue should complain, I guess, but other than them, we shouldn't test everybody or we shouldn't do. We don't have that big a problem that we should look at it any further or?
Issues with water, but I'm saying to you, sometimes it's not the town's problem. You know, you built a house here and the water's not great, but it's the nature of the grounds underneath you. It's, you know.
Okay.
When we have, in my, in my street, my, my well is a hundred and fifty feet. When I turn on the faucet, it comes out like a fire hose every time, crystal clear. The guy across the street, he always complaining and dribbles out, you know, so he's, he's drilling a new well to see if.
And he can't be, but probably less than two hundred feet. Just the difference, you get these.
And so that is really just, they're victim of the environment or the, of the conditions that they live under, but it has nothing to do with us or anything we've done or, there's nothing we can really do to correct it.
The dump was one.
The dump was one thing and those numbers were so apparent.
Right, right. Okay, and what have we done for the lady that was in here? Remember, she wanted to?
Same thing. Again, Joe is looking at her number there.
Yeah.
Joe Dilke.
Yeah.
At Connecticut Valley, Tom as well. And we're looking at a couple of other tests to make sure we can isolate. Is it her line? Is it the other lines? Because it's a if you looked at it, how it got read exactly, it's almost like a peace symbol, you know, so it comes out the source. Making sure that something isn't infiltrating back into the line. So more data.
Well, okay, we're doing the best we can. Okay, that's all I wanna know. That's all I have. Oh, no, I do have another thing. I have a, we're gonna put a press release out about the Hampton hire as a nurse. That's her picture. And it doesn't say anything except that we recently announced that we're hiring her, is what her background is. And then quotes Jay, but he was just saying, we're fortunate to have healthcare professionals communicate with local residents and state medical officials. And assure our neighbors receive the best information possible. So we are pleased that this position is being funded with COVID funds.
John from the, John Lester from the Water Commission there says we could add, Scantic Valley Water District could add up to an additional ninety residential.
I would, and I think Jim Smith is on the call here. I thought that was special legislation and it was limited to the eighteen, eighteen house lots within the area around the dump, of which nine were built on. And the original owners got the water for free if they sold and, you know, there's. I didn't think you could expand it.
Because there was a guy on the hill that wanted to do something.
You know, that's something, John. I know John's looking for another member and I believe there was somebody on the call that was on the Zoom thing interested in joining his board, so.
Oh, John.
Town administrator report, John, you have any? Town administrator.
Just call your attention to the letter. That's the last in your file. From a resident.
It's a zoning question, so it's a home question.
I did talk with the Munson Town Administrator about a conservation agent. They're also in need. I thought that if we could find a third town, we could do a three-way sharing. And it would work well. We could hire a professional person to split, split it three ways. I did talk with the town manager in East Long Meadow about it. You know, we had had some earlier discussions earlier this year and because of budget constraints, they're not doing anything, it can't do anything, so.
I still go back to what Mary Ann and I were saying the other day. Hard to believe there's not a local college. Has, I mean, the Stockbridge School, something like that, that has some interest in this type of thing.
It's just that we, we didn't get any result from our advertising. Not, not a result that was attractive to the Conservation Division.
We don't want the people from our, our way, but still.
Well, I'm gonna pursue this with Evan and see if we can find third community, because I think a three-way split would be a very modest cost. We already have a budget for it and it would work well. And it's needed. You have a map that was given to us by Ty and Bond on the walking tour last week.
I appreciate the town people that did not swerve at Bob and I. Thank you very much.
We were taking our lives in our hands to walk along Allen Street.
Are they waving at you?
Yeah, that's what they were doing, giving.
It'll be a while.
Yeah, there's some, there are some challenges here. Obviously, if you go with the, and I'll call it the west route, if you will, the mini mall side. You're crossing an awful lot of parking lot and you have a very thin margin in some of those areas there. The problem with the east one, which is more attractive, except in the wetland area in front of, near Claude's house.
Street from.
Yeah, cross street from, right. That's the, other than that, that's the only challenging on that side there. And you actually came up to a better crossing, I don't know if people can see it there. But if you wrapped around Carning's Corner and actually crossed, crossed Rediker's driveway, you really get the crowd of traffic harm. And then you have the, the two buildings or two properties that committed to a sidewalk. Rediker, when he put his building in, committed to putting a sidewalk in. The bank and you see they already actually have a partial sidewalk ready to connect. So except for, and you know, this is something to work with conservation on, is there a solution there? The people from Ty and Bond did say mediation required for that would be some expense to it. The other thing that I mentioned to, to Bob, and I'm gonna work with Lisa on this, is really to get a sense of, we're connecting with the housing authority. Where do they wanna go? If those are our customers, if you will, where do they wanna go? If ninety percent of the time, all they wanna do is go to the market, maybe we're putting too much into it. That's the thing.
That's, I agree with that.
So and then we're into, the biggest problem there is safety, safety, safety.
To the market or?
No crossing right there. I mean, you and I have been in that corner long enough and we know that the traffic there can be pretty dangerous. You know, they come, not the Hampton people, but the Connecticut people zoom up that road to get to that cheap gas in Hampton.
But see, I always thought that if you put one of those lights like they have in Isla Meadow, the one at the, at.
What a chestnut, as you come up with the, around the thing there.
Right, and that goes on when somebody is there. So the traffic goes normally all the time. And when somebody wants to cross it, the light goes, the thing goes on and you have to stop.
You hope they stop.
Yeah, but. You know, I mean.
I, I, I think it doesn't work well unless you have some kind of light.
Yeah, it is a light.
Crossing, if you're gonna have people crossing from the senior center right there, because that's where the cars are going. And then further down, obviously it's hazardous and, yeah, when you come through the parking lots as well. My thought is that this could be done in conjunction with a typical project in four or five years.
Four or five years is a good amount of time.
We can buy that light on Amazon and have it here next week. We can buy that light on Amazon and have it here next week and put it in ourselves.
It would take that much time to get a TIP project, uh, approved and funded. And, uh, that, that would be the time to integrate something like this.
Well, I have never heard, I have never heard a ground swell of support or interest in doing sidewalks. I really haven't. I mean, it came up, I think maybe Vinnie brought it up first, or somebody, I can't remember.
No, people, it's been, it's been constant, no, it's been fifteen years, somebody always brings up.
Well, maybe it was other people that I didn't hear.
Expanding Main Street, or coming down Summers, or how do we access the senior center at that time?
I don't think you'll have a soul that will walk from the senior housing to the senior center, for God's sake, that's two miles. You don't have many senior citizens that are gonna walk two miles.
Well, they didn't get into, and I don't wanna go.
You have people that walk there?
No, the danger is, again, crossing at, at speed. I think that's, that's the thing.
The danger is what?
Crossing that road and looking at the speed you're crossing at. I mean, it's all well and good to have a sign. Look, I walk the rail trail with my wife all the time.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect.
And that's fine, and you cross Chestnut there, and you hope that those people respect the fact they're supposed to stop. But you don't take it for near rented, because there are some that are just gonna go get out of the road.
Well, uh, this was funded by the Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue. And there is a design, uh, for some use later on.
Yeah, okay. Again, let me go back, let me finish up with the housing and really get a, a sense from them. That's our customer base, you will.
Somebody's on that committee, I think, that you're with, so.
And that was a good one.
Yeah, it was a good one.
Yeah.
On a very hot day. Amerusco is, is moving forward, they're gonna be before the planning board. We did the video conference on the twenty-ninth. Um, Eric Weiss of PVPC is going to be part of the meeting tomorrow. And he's going to assist in trying to come up with some regional approaches for uh, health, when, when our health agent retires next year. Rather than just each town hiring one, we might just go up with some kind of governing structure as well as, um, a, a new agent. Uh, and also to further explore, uh, dispatch, so.
One of the problems with going with re, is regionalization, which is definitely a financial benefit to almost all people, is the minority community has to take a very proactive role in seeing that they can services. Okay, you know, because it's very easy to get, you know, we've seen these guys development taken care of and you don't, you don't get taken care of. And, and one of the ways they can do it is, for example, is the Board of Health having that monthly meeting. We're gonna have you people in our, in our building every month telling us something. So I think that we would have to be a, a sensitive to that.
Hmm.
Well, I, if one wagon, the building suggested that if we're gonna do all this regionalization with Wilbraham, why not become South Wilbraham again, so.
That's, that's another concern.
The municipal vulnerability project is approved and funded, and I am scheduled to have a conference with the administrator in Boston to talk about going forward with this, the planning part of it. Duct work has been cleaned in the building, and so.
I noticed a difference.
It'll be much safer, it'll be much safer upstairs for the folks at the library. And as far as meetings, there you have a list of meetings. Uh, I have a request, there, there is a request for an update and a chart uh, on, uh, the, uh, the, the various solar projects in town.
Hmm.
Uh, we had a chart, uh, last spring. I've asked the assessors to update it for me, I don't have it yet. Of course, we lost our assessor, so Jane is gonna do it.
I brought that up because, again, same thing, if we need to add a couple articles that would tell me to get authorization for pilot negotiations, we need to get that going. Now, they don't expire, so it's good to get them on that warrant.
Do we, we advertise for her position, right?
Yes.
And, any?
Uh, yes, they have, uh,
You had a couple.
They have a, 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 at least one prospect, I know. Uh, I haven't, uh, talked with Norm Charest, uh, for about a week, but, uh, they are optimistic that they can hire a competent person. Big loss, though.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Anything else to come before the board? Well, you just, you brought that up, this is gonna go to the building inspector, right?
Yes.
Well, is this the?
It should, it's a sign question.
Yeah.
She called me today and asked about it, and, um, she has spoken with Wendell Holbert about this, and she was not satisfied with his explanation. And now she's asking for this, and, um, I don't know that Wendell has any authority to grant her a particular.
I don't know if we do either.
I, I don't.
It's a variance.
No, it's, it's a.
I don't think she's in this place anymore.
It, it's, it's a variance, right? She gotta go to ZBA?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, you don't have authority over that.
No.
She might be better, she might be better served to go to a resident that she knows and just put the sign on the resident's property. She can do that.
No, no.
She can't put a sign for her.
No, you can put your own business in.
Yeah.
No, oh, only my business I can put, oh, I didn't know that, I thought it could be, I've seen houses.
Maybe you should check with Jeb Berliner and see if this is something that they would consider.
Consider. What did the bee people do? Didn't they put a person that was making bees stuff up on?
Making bees?
Uh.
God makes bees.
Glendale or up on one of those streets, she'd make the honey. And she went to the planning board?
Yeah.
And they said, okay, didn't they?
On her.
What was she doing?
But if, if, if it's on your property.
It was her own property, is that the idea?
It's a home occupation at that point, you're a law deficit.
It has to be a certain, only can be a certain size in the holiday.
Yeah, yeah.
I know she gave samples, it was very good.
All right, uh, anything else to come before the board?
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor?